Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise to the bench and remain standing for one minute of silence.
The United States is our empire and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have, I would like to have a moment of silence for our first responders who've given the ultimate sacrifice and also include Neil Kline, who is a life member of Rose Fire Company and will be missed by everybody who knew him, I think, and also Dakota Dexon passed away today. Thank you. You ready, Chief?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My notes for the month of April. Stand to the side, I don't want to kind of address everybody here. In the borough, we only had eight calls for the month. Very good month, everybody was paying attention to what they were doing at home and made where the firehouse didn't have to come out too often. Our total man-hours in our calls total were thirty-three for the month. With one hundred and ninety man-hours by your volunteers, the training hours were a hundred and ten hours for the month. The neat thing right here is our average time from dispatch to the time we hit the street was twenty-two seconds. A lot of times, so we give the young guys credit, give the guys at the firehouse a lot of credit for that. Our dispatch to arrival time inside the borough was a minute forty-seven seconds. I hope not a place where I shoot ray on my firehouse. Other notes. We wrapped up a several-week house burning fire structure project on Taylor Hill Road. The amount of experience that our young firefighters got was, can't measure. I mean, it was excellent. The experience gained was awesome by these guys. We bring a better product to your homes every time we show up because of the training that Deputy Chief Tim Kemp, Assistant Chief Kerry Baum, and President Kurt Holloway do with these guys. So greatly appreciated if you know any of these people, I hope you would speak to them about that. Your county experienced a historic fire in Stewartstown during the month of April. I'm sure everybody saw it on the news. We responded with a pumper truck and a ladder truck. We operated for over nine hours with nine personnel while another three were standing by at the station. Also, in that morning, we had a fundraiser that we were worried if it was going to get off or not because of having nine people on a fire call. We had ex-members, we had people we haven't seen in a while, we had ladies, the ladies officers already picked it up, we had some lives, some firefighters show up to help out until we could get back to operate this fundraiser. So it was really nice to see the outpouring of help by some of our ex-members and members will see a lot. Our crews were also very instrumental in saving part of Mill Street in Stewartstown. Made me feel pretty good. They understood the role that they had to play and our guys made the play pretty good. And as you talked about, forty-plus-year member Neil Kline, that's passed away last week. We're going to have a funeral service for him with Fire Department Honors on Saturday. So the Shrewsbury Volunteer Fire Department will be covering calls in New Freedom Borough. One last thing I had over the weekend, a fire EMS personnel responded to a call in Railroad Borough. It was for an unconscious, non-responsive, non-breathing, six-month-old child. Our people made clinical save, it's pretty good, that rarely happens. They did CPR over the child on the way to the hospital. They got pulse restored and the child's with us today. So this is a total of five fire personnel, two ambulance personnel, and two medics that heard the call and came from home that live in Shrewsbury and met us on the scene. And they rode along in the ambulance and made lifesaving measures on the child. So I just want to let you know how dedicated our people are, either our volunteers or our paid EMS staff. Thank you all very much. I hope you all have a good evening. That's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
First, thank you. From what I'm understanding for the fires in Stewartstown, a lot of that really played out because of pre-advanced planning they have for that particular building?
Yes.
Here in New Freedom, we have some older buildings.
Yes.
We have some, you know, impressive, I don't know what's inside there.
Correct.
You know, sort of, do we have those types of planning in part for our buildings?
We have, and some of them we're trying to uncover the dust off of. Our supply has changed over the years, which has been a great help and it's changed our positive way. So we're working on pre-fire planning for some of our older buildings in our area or our high-value buildings. So we're working on it. I'd like to tell you yes, I can't honestly tell you yes, but we are moving in that direction.
That's right, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to just take a couple of minutes. I'm mostly addressing council regarding several comments that were made last meeting and really hoping to provide some facts and clarity. First, it was discussed that an elected official should not vote on the S Y C REC Commission. The fact of the matter is, is over a year ago, April of twenty-three, the S Y C REC I G A was approved by council. And the I G A states that the two elected officials on S Y C REC will be voting members. It's not a conflict of interest, it's just municipal business being conducted by a commission. Council members serve and vote on the Police Commission, the Planning Commission, and now the REC Commission. Second, a point of order was called regarding the hiring of the Director. The fact is, the hiring of the REC Director prior to forming the Commission was discussed in council and was recommended by D C N R. It's in the March seventh, New Freedom REC minutes, which state in part, Andy Schaefer, Todd Ziegler, Art Rutledge, Andy Bobby, and Jason Boers from D C N R have interviewed six applicants. Per Andrew Schaefer, the Recreation Director must be in place before the borough can move forward with Commission appointments. So these minutes were provided to council at the March meeting and it shows that we were all aware of what was going on. Third, my actions were questioned regarding legality and protocol. The fact of the matter is, as President, I submit my recommendations to council and council votes. This is protocol, just like recommending Planning Commission or Police Commission appointments, and I always ask for council to ratify all the appointments, so everything is above board. Finally, for whatever reason, a fantasy lie about the D F W was discussed. It was said that I caused three people to quit. I don't know why I'm discussing the D F W in the borough meeting, but the fact of the matter is, I never had a birthday party at the D F W. Three people did quit and walked out, but it was in support of the outgoing canteen manager. Neither the three people leaving nor the canteen manager leaving had anything to do with me. And I really want everybody to know, I'm not a combat veteran, I'm not a regular member. I served in the Navy on a boat, submarine. I'm not a voting member of the D F W. I have nothing to do with hiring, firing, or other decisions made there. Those are all done by the regular members. There were other comments made, but I've covered the big ones that kind of personally bothered me and that people have been talking about. I have no personal agenda. My job here is to continue to do what most benefits the citizens of New Freedom Borough. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the regular, or the minutes from the regular meetings held April eighth?
Make a motion to approve the April eighth meeting minutes with the inclusion of the three letters that were read in open meeting and attached to these minutes.
I don't, you don't hear a motion, so I'll make a comment.
I need a motion.
Wait, I don't hear a second.
No second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Minutes do not include read resignation letters, especially when the resignation letters included things which were not necessarily true. So I can't see any purpose to, I mean, do the minutes include that the people resigned? I would be more inclined to include any, but no, that's not appropriate.
It is appropriate when two separate recording devices fail and to get accurate representation of the meeting, these should be included in the April minutes. And just because you might not like what it says doesn't mean that it should not be included.
It's not a matter of like, it's not true.
Are you just going to have a piss and mash?
That.
Sorry?
Are you just going to have a piss and mash back and forth? Or are you just trying to omit things that should be there by policy and procedure? And due to your failings with devices, now they are omitted when they should have been there in the first place or accessible, and now you're saying it's inappropriate? I don't mean to interject, I'm just, I'm trying to be quiet back here. Devin Taylor.
Appreciate that. Well, first of all, the recordings are not actually the minutes of the meeting. The minutes of the meeting are what you see in front of you in paper. That's what the minutes are. And the, and minutes are not meant to record each individual sentence of the meeting or even to quote things. And in addition to that, the correspondence read were not even read, and we were not even able to question the people who sent in the correspondence because they were read by other people. So it would be very inappropriate to include that. If they wanted to come back at some time in the future and read their resignation letters into the minutes for the recording, that would be fine, but they still would not show up in the written minutes. I mean, that's a Robert's Rules thing, we've never done that before.
It sounds like, myself included, maybe there's a few of us who have a difference of opinion on what transparency looks like.
No, I don't think so.
Sharon was on the phone and she was available, and she made herself available. Denise is sitting right here in the audience, and she was available. And just because you believe it's not true is not a reason that is your perception of it, this is their written word, and we do not have.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it up to the voting, I'm not going, I'm not going to.
He remembered these to the best of his ability.
Yeah, I mean, just if council wants a little clarification from the legal side there, for public comment, it's not a verbatim as we see from the other comments. For example, John Woods with Rose Fire Company was in attendance to write call reports for March two thousand twenty-four. It doesn't say every report he went through and quote everything he said, so it's not required for that.
I think it's deceptive practice, gentlemen. The reality matter is, we have the means to make this visible to more people than you are physically able to be here, and you're selectively putting things out there, and it's less than transparent. You have people who are here willing to talk about grievances, and you're now two of you in support of less than transparent. Anybody else?
I'm saying what he is telling you what the law is. Yeah, I'm just saying what the law is.
Okay.
That's fine, but these were significant occurrences within the meeting.
This is an ethics issue, I'm sorry.
Should be above board and it should be included. The people have a right to know, and they have no right because two recording devices seem to have failed for that meeting separately.
The one was announced at the beginning of the meeting that there was an issue which Kim said that there seemed to be some kind of problem as soon as you turned it on, correct?
Yeah, I take this.
Well, and address, the recording secretary should have addressed that if Kim said that there was a problem with it.
Yeah, and I did not realize until after the meeting was over.
Yeah.
And I tried to, yeah, I got a new mini-disc for the camera and formatted it, and it apparently was not.
Okay, again, the topic are approving the minutes. Does anyone have any further discussion on the minutes?
Sir, there can't be submitted or not.
We have a motion and a second on the floor on Councilwoman's motion with the amendment to include the letters.
I'll call the question.
All in favor of, well, you have, the motion was to include them, okay. All in favor of approving the minutes and including the letters that, as they were read, say aye?
Aye.
Pos?
Aye.
My vote is no. I don't know what the count is.
Do you guys have a recorder?
Roll call.
Roll call vote then.
Danny?
Four hands.
Danny or Dennis?
Doesn't matter, he's in.
What, you said Danny, look down?
No.
Yes. No.
My vote is no.
Yes.
Yes.
This one.
Excuse me.
It's all right. My vote is no.
Okay, it's four to three. So do I need another motion to accept the minutes as written?
Correct.
I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos?
No.
No.
My vote is aye. I would entertain a motion to accept the Treacher's Report pending audit.
Motion to approve the Treacher's Report for April two thousand twenty-four pending audit?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments, discussion?
One question, page fifteen, the Arbor King Tree Expert for Weathersfield, five thousand nine hundred. Is that taking the trees down? Or was that looking at all the trees? What was that?
That was just taking two of the trees down that were at the entrance that we did, that we were concerned about if they were to fall, that they'd be falling onto the road or into the driveway.
They were.
Yeah, I know, so.
It's been almost that much for smaller ones.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. Sign regulation, draft ordinance?
No update on the draft ordinance except that the Planning Commission will be reviewing that draft signed ordinance during the meeting next Monday, May twentieth.
So there's no action on that. Stormwater channel update?
Yeah, no update, just we're waiting for drier weather to be able to complete that work.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution updating volunteer service credit criteria. This is what we spoke about before, to update the fire company volunteer tax credit, or point system to match the other municipalities.
Still moved.
Second.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. Consider authorizing the refund of nine thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is thirty percent, to Northern Central Railway for twenty twenty-three amusement tax remitted. Also, I want to remind everybody that this includes the discounted rides for New Freedom residents and for during heritage, but it does not include the beautification. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move that.
Sorry?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've never heard of the Federal Railroad Administrator's mandated rebuilding of the N C R steam engine. It was a private citizen that came and wanted the engine.
I didn't hear the question.
I've never heard of the Federal Railroad Administrator's mandated rebuilding of the N C R steam engine. It was always a, it was a personal resident that came here or an individual man that came here and wanted the train?
Federal Railroad Administration Division, Department of Transportation, who oversees the safety and operation and sets the operating rules for railroads, including the Northern Central.
They mandated that the steam engine be rebuilt?
It's, I don't have all the details because we've just received notice. I could give you the details next month where they're going to be reviewed.
Is this in our packet somewhere?
It's under York County Economic.
And how were the detailed visits of New Freedom? Very specific, five hundred and twenty-one people, three hundred and thirty-seven?
I don't know, I haven't seen it. I don't know what you're talking.
York County Economic Alliance uses software and they're able to track those details.
How are they using software and the people walking into Freedom?
The Economic Alliance uses software. I believe the software is Placer AI, and you can get tourism information around York County and specific areas of it in the county.
So it's kind of a guesstimate?
No.
No, they're very specific.
How did they know exactly how many people were just seven in vortex?
If they just came up and stood and looked at the train for ten minutes, they're saying they know.
We know where the tourists come from on the train because every train ticket sold has an individual zip code, and we go by zip codes for the riders on the train.
Now, this has to do with N C R bringing in consumers to New Freedom and the businesses that are here, and how many of your customers, I think, visit these establishments?
I think that, I mean, they use the word extrapolate, so I think it is, it's a scientific guess, but it is, it's not, it's obviously not, they don't stand there with a clicker and count people and count how much money they're using, but it is an estimate.
That's why it's so alarming that, you know, including when they aren't open, they know people that are coming by there, being tracked.
Yeah, again, what they spent, I think it's an extrapolation.
Yeah.
It's like I said, a guesstimate.
Yeah.
A little bit better than a guesstimate, maybe, but yeah, pretty much.
Well, that was a question I asked in the last meeting. Does the N C R railroad provide increase in revenue for us? And if all these people are coming in and buying things in our establishments, in fact, it is increasing revenue here. And it comes back to us.
It's less than one person a day, one point five to one person a day for each business. I don't know that that would make a huge difference to any business if they didn't have one point five or one person in for a day.
And financially, it makes no difference to you.
But it does to the people when we take the money from the general fund, it matters.
We're giving back to the railroad what they paid in amusement tax, we're just asking to give thirty percent back to them.
But yes, but the people that did come here to use that amusement tax used our infrastructure.
Right.
And so forth, so that's coming from? It should become from the amusement tax, but we're giving that up so that it again goes back to the people of New Freedom.
But again, the nine thousand, lost it. Nine thousand six hundred, that's going to, Bob, that's specifically going to be used for New Freedom?
Freedom Fest, reduce tickets for Freedom Fest, reduce tickets for Smoke on the Rails. We pulled out the beautification.
Those are people coming from everywhere, I don't know how that benefits specifically the residents of New Freedom. Can you go back to the Federal Railroad Administration to receive money?
I don't have that data.
They paid it to us, so they should come to us and get it.
Well, that would be grant money because you're a nonprofit and you could apply for grants.
Yes, I do apply for grants.
Yeah.
Only about sixty-five percent of our revenue comes from ticket sales. The rest comes from grant sponsorships and other activities.
And sales were up twenty-five percent? Is that right, this last year?
Yes.
Devin?
Are there any other organizations that could help with what the train's trying to do so the train can put its money towards train stuff? Right, you know, we've got the Lions Club, we've got, you know, why are we trying to give them more money, right, the train more money and not the people, right? They're saying it's going to go through reducing, you know, Smoke on Rails prices and all these things, they're still bringing outside revenue in, but we have other organizations throughout the community that can support as well.
And this government body supports all of those as well. We donate to the Lions Club, we open the community center to them, the park is used throughout the year, we do things with the Lions Club. We're very supportive of the Lions Club, supportive of the D F W, supportive of the of the N C R. This is.
This is money that was collected by the train. Only the train collects the amusement tax, five percent on top of the ticket prices. All the other activities that occur in New Freedom are exempt from that because the law, your regulations say it has to be an activity that is more than seven days, so.
I'm just saying, it sounds like you're trying to get money back from them that you pay out to be in operation. I disagree. You pay it, I think that the community should dictate where that money goes at that point.
Community is dictating.
Not right back to the train.
The community is dictating, that's why the motion is in front of this board.
You mean the ten of you up here? I'm sorry, my math's not great. And the couple that are in attendance?
We're all here.
So if there's twenty thousand in amusement tax and you want to give ten back and it costs thirty thousand to repay the parking lot, well, now we've only, instead of having twenty thousand, now we only have ten, so now we have to get the rest from the people again. That's where I have the heartache of, we have that amusement tax for a reason, we should be keeping the amusement tax and using it for the purposes of the infrastructure and so forth that the people come to use this train that gets used here within.
I don't think the amusement tax was ever earmarked for anything in particular, it was just a tax enacted by previous council that goes into our general revenue or wherever, which we could have established that that helps out with the walkways that we spent how much money on.
It was my understanding that that council enacted it for the very reason of the infrastructure being used and having a way of maintaining it, so giving it back does not make sense.
How many, how many businesses give us amusement tax money?
One. It's basically singled up by.
But it's, it's basically singled up by New.
I'll call the question. I'll call the question.
It's only seven days.
Which I, I think is.
Two thirds agreement when you call the question.
Hold on a second.
Okay. I have a motion. Call the question. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. In the question of considering the authorizing a refund of nine thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, which would be thirty percent to Northern Central Railway for 2023, please signify acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Which is dead.
No, that was calling the question.
You wanted a vote on calling the question, so I had a vote on calling the question. Oh, okay, the two thirds. Now we're voting on the question. So all in favor, all in favor of rebating the thirty percent of the amusement tax, please say aye.
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 Can I explain? I know. No, we're in the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
My vote is aye. Motion carries. Let me explain when you call the question.
Before, before you go into that, I'd like to say that this is now the, the probably third or fourth year that we've essentially had this conversation. It, it's very one-sided when there's only one company that, that is paying this when there's other, we'll say, organizations that operate within the borough. And we, we talked about it a couple of months ago. I'd like to have some kind of either working session or something outside of this meeting to discuss other things, like what, what's the, the definition of an amusement with a number of days? Because it doesn't say it has to be consecutive or not consecutive, because I know there's another organization in here that has events throughout the summer that total several weeks, just not consecutive, that four days in a seven day period, several weeks out of the year. I think that my, my personal opinion is, is that, again, my personal opinion is that it shouldn't be five percent. And there's other organizations within the borough that should be contributing to this amusement tax. But again, that is my personal opinion.
I agree. Does, does that read seven consecutive days?
Does it?
I thought we discussed that.
I think it said, I think it said seven days and anything else, anything below seven days was considered a burden to the borough to try to administer or something, something to that effect.
Because the discussion was to even get, get rid of the amusement tax altogether because there's only one organization then, but wait, let me finish.
I apologize.
But there's a possibility in the future that something else could come up, you know, that has a seven day or more event. But that, it's a double edged sword too, Kim, because as you know, if we abolish the amusement tax, it takes away a five percent increase on the ticket. And there may be a time whenever there, the, the council decides that they want to use the money for something else. But if the money just goes away, NCR loses the ability to come and ask for thirty percent rebate because there won't be anything to rebate. So NCR, I don't think is really in favor of abolishing the amusement tax. They are more in favor of getting a thirty percent rebate every year, which is kind of what we did last year. We were going to abolish the amusement tax, but because it is a double edged sword for NCR, we kept the amusement tax. We did not agree to rebate it every year, which is why it comes before us every year. But it is, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll wax philosophic for a second. My wife, hold on, Devin. I, my wife and I recently took a vacation and we went down the Keys and they have this beautiful bridge built all the way down to the southernmost point in Florida. That, that bridge was built by tax dollars. I mean, they could have said, yeah, we don't care if anyone sees the southernmost point in Florida. We're not going to build a bridge. If somebody wants to build a bridge, let them fund it. But they didn't. They used tax dollars to fund that and the area is booming. It is part and parcel of councils and municipalities to provide this kind of entertainment, recreation, things for their citizens to do. And what the York Economic Alliance is trying to tell you is that they're bringing in thirty-six thousand three hundred dollars in consumer spending for six businesses that they applied the software to and tracked. So, yes, it causes employment. It causes, you know, the kids to be able to get jobs at seven and waitressing jobs and whatnot. So this is part of the economy and it is part of what government is for. That's my philosophical statement. Devin?
What do you think the number one attraction in New Freedom borough is? What do you think brings people to New Freedom?
Outsiders.
Anybody on board?
Outsiders from New Freedom? This isn't a question and answer period, Devin.
Well, I'm just curious.
I take a little bit of offense, you know. I think probably the number one, I think the number one attraction probably for outsiders is the NCR.
Okay, so recognizing that one single entity has been creating the burden on our infrastructures by bringing outsiders in. We get an income, income, increase in our local economy, but because of the, the railroad, our infrastructure is taxed heavier. Not like in the, the financial sense, but we have excess traffic coming through our communities because of a single entity. They should, they should have the financial burden.
What part, what part of our infrastructure are you seeing impacted by NCR?
Neglected trail parts and, you know, you know, over.
Roads, parking lot.
Roads, parking lot. I, I don't even know where to start. I thought this was a Q and A, Andy.
Oh.
Or Mr. President, what can I refer you at? What's the formal terms here?
Mr. President. Mr. President is fine.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I know they said it last month or the month before, what was the total of the amusement tax that they took in?
Thirty-two thousand. Thirty, yeah, thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. That was in 2023.
Currently, we do not have a motion on the table, so I, I think what, I'm sorry?
It's already passed.
Yes, it's already passed. That's what I just said. We don't have a motion on the table. So the only thing we do have to discuss is whether or not we want to form a committee to discuss amusement taxes in general.
Do we need another committee or can we have a working session?
We have a working session, but we'd have to be less than three or less, right?
I don't know. We've never done a working session before, so.
I actually did for something. I forget what it was. Yeah. Well, considering this is a one, once a year thing and it's, it's May, why don't we bring it up during the budget cycle? Would that be appropriate?
I, yeah, that, I don't necessarily care about the timeline. I just like to have the conversations. So we're not having this conversation.
Can you make a note?
Every single year.
Yeah. Can you make a note that we bring this up during the budget cycle and talk about the amusement tax?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Thank you.
And it does not say consecutive. It just says seven days and one calendar year.
I'm not going to, we can talk about it at a different time, about definitions of certain stuff. All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I explain my comment? So. Sure. I know that everybody's not as familiar with Robert's rules. When someone calls the question, that immediately ceases all discussion. But it takes a two thirds vote of council to approve calling the question at that time. Which is why we did that. I know. There are times we. Yeah, I've been a little. Don't understand. A little lax with them.
Mr. President, if you need anyone to work, like Ryan was saying, I was going to say if, if he wants somebody to work with, I'll, I'll help him.
Well, let's wait for the budget cycle. I think that would be appropriate since it is a tax, so. Okay, I would consider a motion to approve the ordinance accepting the third amended and restated joint municipal agreement for law enforcement services.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I have a concern. I, let me see what page it's on. Highlight it. It has to do with any something that happens. If the, well, I have it kind of memorized. If a police officer does something and they get sued, they have a cap of four million dollars. We all read the newspaper. If something goes wonky, you know what's going to happen. It's going to be a lot more than four million dollars. And in the IGA, it states that the municipalities individually are responsible for the balance of what that lawsuit is. Can you say where that is? Because I don't read, I don't recall that. Yeah. It's on page sixteen. "The commission shall maintain policy liability insurance coverage for at least four million dollars against claims arising out of police activities. That for purposes of liability and actions on the member municipalities shall be proportionately liable for actions against any municipality for services lawfully provided." The, the proportion of liability should have any same proportion as the actual expenses in the member municipalities, which would mean we'd have to pay for thirty percent of it, over four million dollars. I think that they, it should be, their part of it should be much more than a four million dollar policy. So what you're suggesting is. We should take out a, as mayor, I had to take out a million dollar policy. I had to. So you're suggesting that the police commission should be carrying more than four million dollars? Absolutely. How many times do we see this thirteen, fourteen, fifteen million dollars? It could bankrupt them and us. I just think it's a matter of concern that the borough and. What would our, what would our liability insurance cover individually as a municipality? For police coverage? Beyond the four million dollars that the police covers?
We'll kick into liability and then we'll kick on into your umbrella policy. But if, if there's a lawsuit of that magnitude, they're going to name the individual municipality where it occurred anyway. So we don't really see the need to, to double it up and increase their exposure or their cost on increasing that policy. When, again, if there's something that results in a lawsuit, they're going to name all the parties involved anyway.
Well, they're going to name all of, every municipality that's involved in the, within, within the IGA according to what I'm reading here.
Not.
Unless the solicitor can tell me something different, it says we pay thirty percent of the balance. If they sue us for ten thousand dollars or ten million dollars, out of that six, we're responsible for what? Two. Two million dollars if it's ten million. We know they've gone up a lot higher than that. Things happen and that, that just scares me. Four million dollars. I don't think that's adequate.
Something of that concern should have been brought up before the ordinance was advertised and reviewed for months on end.
So this section's always been in the, in the IGA, right? It's not new?
No, it's not.
Right now?
Yeah, and that's, as Andy said, that's, that's four million. The department has four million in coverage. Then the municipality has its coverage, which I don't know what you're.
Well, that's my concern. What coverage, will we, will we cover it?
High. Yeah, it is. I think the last time review was close to, well, liability's ten million. Yeah.
Okay, then we, then we should be in good shape. I didn't know what our coverage was.
So this, just for clarification, this says at least four million dollars. They can go higher than that, correct?
Yeah, at least four million. That's the minimum.
Do we know what they have now already?
Scare us short. I mean, that would be a question for. Maybe, maybe I can ask for sure, but I'm, I'm speaking on the back. It was just a concern that came up in my head reading through this whole thing again. Anybody else have any thoughts? Andy? Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, let me just key on with Bruce Merrill, a New Freedom resident. Let me key on with the mayor's desk because I think he's got a, a point there in, in a number of other ways as well. And at the last meeting, I queued up a question and concern about Article eleven contractual police services and jointer of additional municipalities under section B, which says the commission may permit the purchase of services by non-participating municipalities on terms usually agreed upon and approved by the commission. At the last meeting, I think you need to reserve that right to the council and the individual members.
I'm sorry, what page is that on?
That's the, that's right near the end of your services.
Page sixteen.
Article eleven. I'm not sure what, page sixteen, page seventeen? Point being, it's very easy.
So the council doesn't have to approve that the commission does?
Right, so you, you wouldn't get a say in that. My point being, it'd be very easy for the people on the commission to look at a short term economic benefit. If some community comes in and says, we want to rent your police services and we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars a year. You can see the immediate economic benefit of that. But the long term economic liabilities are a little bit more difficult to see. And I think the mayor alluded to that, that if something goes haywire and there's some lawsuit, are you really want to be on the end of that lawsuit? Particularly if you haven't had the chance to voice your own opinion and whether or not it'd be good to issue that contract or not. I think you ought to reserve that right to the council and not just to the commission members. Now, to the point that I might make, if you recall, we have two commission members, Mr. Rysoff, Mrs. Ririch. At the last council meeting, they voted in opposition to what the other council members wanted to do in terms of the person you wanted to hire and when you were going to hire them for recreation services. Not that I disagree with their vote. In fact, we're on the council. I might have voted along with them on principle. But the point is, you have two people that might disagree with their council and approve something on a commission that the rest of the council might not want to do. And I, for that purpose and because of the potential for liabilities and police services, I really think you ought to send us back and just reserve that right in that section to the member communities and not delegate it to the commission.
Absolutely not. I am an individual on that police commission. I bring everything back to my council. I'm not going to vote outside of the council because I go to that commission as a whole. It's not just me going. I'm going there as a representative of New Freedom. For, for you to say that I would go and vote against what the majority of my council wanted, I would not. So we absolutely do have representation.
Personally, but this isn't about personalities. Ten years from now, if Erica Ririch isn't sitting on that commission, somebody else might not take that position.
Each municipality has two representatives.
If that's what you want, then you ought to enforce that somehow through the, through the delegation of authorities that they grant you as a commission member.
It is up to the council who they put on that commission as a representative. This council has complete say on who sits on there and that person brings everything back and reports to the council on what happens at the commission. So I believe it's unfounded.
You chose to do something different than the rest of the council wanted to regarding the hiring of individuals.
That was not for an independent commission outside of this council.
I sat on the council. I sat on the commission. There is nothing in ordinance or rights that dictates you vote the way the council says. There's nothing there.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but if, if, if five members or six members on this council, if I'm on the police commission and six people on this council tell me, Andy, vote no, and I go and I vote yes, I will give.
I will guarantee you that at the next council meeting, I won't be on the police commission anymore. I mean, I would be replaced.
I, I hear you, but by then it may be too late. And I would just tell you that the commission historically has not done a particularly good job when it comes to contracts. Back in about a dozen years ago, some of you may recall, probably most of you don't even know, we had police going up to Loganville. And I don't know what the terms of contract were because I wasn't on council, I wasn't on the commission. But I can tell you that when Loganville decided not to continue those services, that came in an email to the chief six weeks before the end of the fiscal year. There was no chance to plan or put anything in the budget. That's how poorly the police commission has issued contracts in the past. And what I'm saying is, given their historical proclivities, I think you want to reserve that right. It may interest you to know that back in 2014, back when Stewartstown came in, southeastern school district was obviously going to come over as well. And they were talking at the time about signing up for a three-year contract. The commission did not issue them the three-year contract. And about a year and a half after they joined, they said, "You know what? Thank you very much. We don't need your services anymore." So the commission has historically not looked out necessarily for its long-term best interests of its members. As I said, it's very easy for the members to see the short-term economic benefits and disregard or not fully lay out the long-term economic liabilities. You get a better chance of that if you all think about it and vote on it, as opposed to just getting back and hearing, "Yeah, it sounds okay, go ahead." You will actually have to look at the details of the contract and...
Contracts are brought back before they're voted on. Everybody had a copy of this. Everybody's able to vote.
Great, well, thank you.
And even the ones you're talking about will come back and they'll be able to read.
Historically, it has not been the way it's occurred. And I thank you for doing that. It's the way it is. But I don't have any guarantee that Erica Ririch is gonna be here in five years to do that.
All right, the words were added that the non-participating municipality contracting with the commission shall be higher than the effective rate charged to member municipalities. That was the stop, the hard stop, I guess, the floor. So that if the commission decided that they were going to take a loss in order to entice somebody to come in, that it could not fall below what the member municipalities were paying. I think that's effective.
Which is exactly what Glenrod's doing, Kirk.
Yeah.
They're paying higher than we are.
My point is, it's not like they're charging 10%. As I said, it's easy to see the short-term economic benefits. We have a police officer who ended his career trying to arrest somebody who was high on meth at a contract community. He took an injury. It was a career-ending injury. Tell me how much that cost us in the long term while that officer couldn't serve his full duties, overtime had to be calculated, hospitalization rates, all those kinds of things. Those are things that may, were not necessarily passed on to the contract community. There are long-term economic liabilities that need to be well-vetted and not just look at the short term. So a 10% surcharge doesn't necessarily mean anything in the long term. I just submitted for your consideration and historically what has happened with the police commission and the way they have issued contracts. If you don't believe me, go back and you can read the minutes. It's, a lot of that is in the minutes about what was offered, what happened, when things went on. And notwithstanding the good intentions of the people who are currently serving, that doesn't mean they'll be serving a year from now, two years from now. You should reserve that and that's how you reserve that right. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks, Bruce. Any discussion? Sorry. No, it was a simultaneous. We have two firsts or a first visit. Erica and Dave. Which other one you want to put as first and second?
I'll do the second.
He will do the second. Okay, any other discussion? The call. All in favor of adopting the ordinance as written? Please say aye.
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 opposed?
Aye.
My vote is no.
Yes, my vote is aye. Ordinance passes. It is, just a point well-taken, what Bruce said. But those are things that, as members of the police commission, you can, those are things that you would be watching out for. Make sure the contracts are valid and that, that everybody is protected. Under New Business, consider approval of a custody agreement with Wilmington Trust for demand deposit U.S. Treasury, state, and local government series securities. Wilmington Trust is a division of M&amp;T Bank. And this is, basically what this does, it allows us to take advantage of the money that we borrow at low rates invested in demand securities and make approximately $120,000 while we're waiting to use the money for sewer and water projects. Does that entertain a motion?
Make a motion to enter into custody agreement with Wilmington Trust and a authorizing and directing it to purchase demand deposit U.S. Treasury, state, and local government series securities on May 21st, 2024 in the principal amounts of $1,015,000 for the sewer fund and $825,000 for the water fund.
It's $3 million. Principal amounts of $3,015,000?
No.
You said one.
I apologize. $3,015,000 for the sewer fund and $825,000 for the water. I apologize. Say it.
Motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Where is something from the IRS saying that's legal? To take money from a bond, drawdown there.
Not a bond, it's a loan.
Excuse that. Take that money and going and investing it somewhere to make money off of it. I don't even know that that's legal. That's not the intended use. I mean, let's go take out $10 million then and go make money.
Well, it would be, it would be the same as if, for instance, let's say you have a balloon payment on your mortgage that's due at the end of this year and you have the money, but instead of, instead of just letting it sit in a shoebox, you're gonna put it into a CD or a, something that earns money. And obviously, there would be IRS rules if it were in something that were risky, but, you know, you can't put it into commodities or something. But, you know, these are demand U.S. Treasury notes. So this is something, unless the country goes belly up, this is a safe investment. And then with the money, they are demand notes. So instead of letting the money sit in a money market account at half a percent interest, you're putting the money into demand bonds, which basically you can cash at any time and get your money back. So there's very, there's basically no risk, virtually no risk.
Who's the, who's the financial advisor on page four for $7,500? You want to talk here?
The, the rates on here, they, it says current on here. That fluctuates with the economy? Were these like a CD, like where they're set?
They're treasury notes.
So they're selling a CD. Okay.
And it said on December 1st of '23 that draw period expired? Hopefully, the draw period expired.
It does, yeah. The draw period expires three years after the, after the initial, after the assignment date. And that, in our general obligation note, that was set to expire on December 31st, which is why we pulled those funds in anticipation of the projects. Normally, the way we would have done that was we would pull the funds based on contract payment approvals that are issued by council.
Who approved the withdrawing of the $3.8 million?
Most of that money was already set in, into those accounts already. It was just that there were balances on those notes.
Did it come before council to make that remaining draw?
The only option would have been to lose those funds at 1.79% and turn around and have to reissue general obligation notes for these upcoming projects at 4% to 5% interest at the time.
There was an automatic. I mean, that was not something...
So you're saying it just wasn't the 1.79 that was expiring? The whole note was expiring?
That's correct, yeah. You would have lost all those funds, the ability to pull those funds.
So you made the decision to pull the rest of it?
That's correct.
On your own? Without coming to council?
That's correct. Those funds were authorized as part of the general obligation note.
Council already authorized the note and authorized, I mean, the whole thing was set up this way so that whenever it expired, so it was just a normal course of doing business. Otherwise, we would have had to re-imply and have a, start over with the interest rate. Interest rates are up right now to...
It talks...
Municipal rates are up around 4.5%, 5%.
About the Wilmington Trust service fees, it talks about the fees are under separate cover. Where's the separate cover of their fees?
It's broken down on that sheet that you have...
This one?
Yeah, it's $3,000 per year. That's why the account custodian is shown there.
So the account custodian is Wilmington?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the net interest benefit is $174,000. There are associated costs, as you've mentioned. So your net benefit is $157,000.
Well, it says $3,000 in parentheses, but then it says $9,000.
Per year, three years. That's based on that drawdown schedule that we have in front of you there.
And the lead, the financial advisor is Concord?
Yes.
Are they a legal tax attorney?
They're the same public finance administrators that we used for all of our general obligation notes.
That was a pretty straightforward question.
That would be no.
Why?
That was a necessary question, council.
Is there a reason?
As a New Freedom resident, I'm allowed to be here, right?
Yeah, you're just not allowed to speak until public comment.
Eh, agree, disagree.
Okay.
You can remove me by force if you like. You're right next door. Or are they too busy chasing one of fugitives through our town at 2:45 in the morning? Gunshots, car crashes, you know, not finding the...
We're way out of order, sir. And I would really appreciate it if you'd stop.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that would be no, they're not a legal tax attorney?
I don't have, I don't know if they have attorneys on staff. However, our attorney that reviewed the general obligation note reviewed this custody agreement as well and made modifications to that, which is always in front of you tonight.
What happens if, if Wilmington, they take possession of this $3.8 million? What happens if they go belly up?
Well, the money's still invested, correct?
Right, they're in treasury bonds. They're not invested.
It's not invested with Wilmington Trust. They are a payer service on those treasury notes. This would be the same that if the borough were to issue a bond, which has been done in the past by New Freedom Borough, but in this case, these are general obligation notes. So there's not, there's not a bond issuance. If you have a bond issuance, you must have a payer. Wilmington Trust would serve most likely because they're in the area as that bond payer, which is what they're doing here is serving as that treasury note payer. You have to have that kind of service to administer this type of program.
And if they lose it? They invest it and they lose it?
Well, they're not investing.
They're not investing it?
We're purchasing those treasury notes.
That have maturity in three years.
Yeah.
Where is the $3.8 million sitting right now?
It is sitting at People's Security, which is who issued the general obligation note. And that's shown on every treasurer's report. And these amounts are shown on every treasurer's report.
People's Security is, I'm sorry, is a People's Bank?
It's different than, yeah. People's Bank is different than People's Security.
And it was originally the $8.8 million from the notes A, B, and C?
Yep.
Where did approximately, or 4.2, 4.5? Where is that gone? Because we're only talking about $3.8.
Yeah, so those funds were used for the Franklin and Main Street water and sewer project. There was a large paving project that was done in, I believe that was 2021. Then there was the Public Works renovation. Then there was the Public Works renovation.
Those all came before council or approved?
Public Works, Franklin?
Franklin and Main Street and Constitution Water and Sewer Projects. And I apologize, I'm drawing, there was some stormwater work that was done and I'm drawing a blank on the rest. But the majority of the amount that you mentioned, that four to five million, was that Franklin made in Constitution Avenue Water and Sewer Project, as well as there was some road reconstruction that was done with that as well.
But again, it all came before council as it was paid.
So none of that went towards any of the sewer upgrading that's going on now?
Correct. There was a brief, so this amount also included refi of the existing debt at the time that was at a higher rate. Then that was from the 2012 general obligation note.
Are you aware of Wilmington Trust in a 2018 lawsuit of falsifying documents?
No. I mean, I'm pretty sure you could search a lot of organizations.
They settled for a million, it was 66 million and 18 million of securities, something like that. Just a little uneasy. And who, who chose to reach out to them? Is it you? Is it Concord? Who, how did it get to having this here?
I worked with Concord Finance to look at options as far as getting those funds into something that the borough could increase its interest earnings.
Again, keep in mind that what they're buying are T-bills. They're not, they're not invested, investing it in something that, you know, is going to result in a lawsuit. It's going to be, once the bills are purchased, it's just like a bond. When I buy a bond that's in my name, the bond will be in the name of the borough and trust through Wilmington. And then if something happened, we would still get the money back. It's not going to go away. WAT bills, when they put them into any of their investments, are non-taxable, which would not put us possibly into a taxable situation, which would not be good. I know a couple of our community service folks, like the Lions Club and some of those other, and Boy Scouts, they're only allowed to have X amount percentage over... But not ever be in a taxable situation because of this. That's not something that would happen.
Because you're investing in treasuries.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because you're investing in treasury bills. Yeah, they're non-taxable.
And I do know that this was reviewed by borough council, Steve Hobson, who's talking here.
Was that the $700 fee?
That's just factored into making sure that closing down that's sufficient.
The financial advisor, that's a one-and-done? I know it's a big move with a chunk of money, but it's very well-protected and we stand to be ahead by 100,000, by 140,000 after fees and whatnot. What's the duration of these funds? They're demand bonds, so...
Yeah, so that drawdown schedule that you have on page, I believe it's four or five in that packet, that breaks it down. So we're looking at ending that drawdown cycle, even for this, is 2026. So you'd have, you'd have the bonds, that's why it's three years for Wilmington Trust, 24, 25, 26. I said bond here, I did not...
Wait a minute, 26, then why do we have... Third, the $3,000 a year, the account custodian fee?
Right, 24, 25, 26.
Okay, this will start in the middle of the year.
This is going to be over $1 million a year when these are due, right?
They're already due.
But, I know, but these, like, those huge payments that just came out in December, too?
They come out, yeah. So you make an interest payment in May and then your interest and principal payment is due in November. Now, yeah, it's a large chunk of money, but keep in mind that that's coming out of general fund, water fund, sewer fund to make that cumulative payment onto those notes. And honestly, a lot of what needed to be borrowed was for projects that were already approved.
Now, is a variable rate on those notes, what's it?
It's the 1.79% is fixed for 10 years.
But it was variable?
After that, it goes variable. The idea there is that's what you do with most of your general obligation notes, is you hold at least a 10-year period that you can refinance that at the time if needed. You're not going to find the bank issue a general obligation note, fixed rate for longer than 10 years, unless it's a higher rate.
Is there any chance that we can get like a second opinion on who manages the community's money outside of Wilmington? Or by some dereliction of negligence, are we now forced to move this money today?
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions? All in favor of declaring Wilmington in trust for the money, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
My vote is aye. Motion carries on. Yes, ma'am.
I would like, since the camera cannot see the audience, I would like it noted that the angry outburst from Mr. Taylor caused a young scout to have to leave the room.
I noticed.
Can you take a five-minute recess?
Anyone posed?
Yeah, we're going to get this.
Anyone else posed?